7:30 and we are now returned to open session. And, Anita, can you take the roll?
Randy Brockway.
Here.
Rachel Morella.
Here.
Michael O'Brien.
Here.
Rich Regan.
Present.
Mary Rosmandia.
Here.
See, we have two people who have public comment. David Bar-- is that the last name?
Barsadi.
Barsadi? Step up to the microphone.
My name is David Barsadi. I have a background in technology. I work for Gury Children's, but that's really not what's important. What is important is I want to talk to you tonight about the technology standards. I know there's a big initiative going away regarding where you guys are going infrastructure-wise. And you've recently hired Don Tufano, and I wanted to basically commend you on that. I've worked with him on the Technology Steering Committee. And while I might not always agree with his decisions, he definitely approaches his decisions thoughtfully and thoroughly, and he doesn't look at the problems myopically. He looks at it sort of holistically, and he approaches it trying to solve the whole problem. And that's what you want in a person like that. However, he is only one person on a very, very limited budget, okay? Technology done right is expensive. And if you want-- and we want technology done right for our children, our community, and our taxpayers, okay? Technology done wrong can cost far more in the long run than if it was done right in the first place. Mr. Tufano's approach to technology infrastructure first as his overall reaching goal is important, and it makes a lot of sense. But I know he has a number of things on his work list, one of being privacy and security of the software that people use here. And looking at safe and development-- safe and appropriate software for the district. Lacking these policies, though, puts the district-- puts the district, the safety of our children, the safety of our students, parents, at a tremendous amount of risk. Developing these policies is probably just as important, if not more so, than developing the infrastructure behind this. And the reason I bring this up tonight is because recently-- and when I say recently, I'm talking last week and the last couple of months-- there's software that's been used by a number of teachers, including the district, that has made national news. And it's not because of the quality of the software. There have been a number of issues with the security and poorly-written policies and privacy policies on these softwares that the teachers are using. RAS Kids, which some of you may be familiar with, is used by the district, and it is only now beginning to encrypt their data. For the last year, they have not encrypted their data nor their passwords, which puts a tremendous amount of risk. And in fact, when it was rolled out last year, we didn't even put passwords on the accounts, which was, in my opinion, a violation of COPA. Fortunately, a parent in California who shares similar concerns got the company to just now start encrypting their data and their passwords, okay? It was apparent, not the district that did this. There are some teachers also at Hollywood who are using ClassDojo. There are many problems with this, one of which was that before, they would retain student data indefinitely. And it wasn't until The New York Times exposed this nationally that they decided, well, we're only going to change it or hold it for a year. Now, there's other problems with ClassDojo. Specifically, it states, and I'm quoting this, "We cannot guarantee the security of user account information." Essentially, that's a get out of jail free cards for when their systems are hacked, okay? Given these issues, the district should not allow anyone to use ClassDojo. MobiMax is another application that is used in this district. MobiMax, as some of you may know, is owned by Learn Without Limits. Mobi's Max's privacy policy states that they will disclose their user information with affiliated companies, being Learn Without Limits. Learn Without Limits does not have a privacy policy per se. They state, and I quote, "We are in agreement with Mailchimp and their privacy policies for the protection of our customer and clients." Mailchimp is their mail server, essentially, that they use as their media. Mailchimp's privacy policy states that they will use personally identifiable information to promote and use-- promote the use of their services. So what does this mean? This means that the information you provide to MobiMax could be given to Mailchimp to then turn around and market to parents, districts, and what have you.
Thank you.
This is-- the data found in ClassDojo and MobiMax alone might be meaningless, but to combine together, it's a very powerful tool. To show you how important this data is-- and I know this might be an abstract idea of the data, like what people use or what people click on, but I'm sure probably most of us have shopped at Target at some point in our time, okay? Target identifies every customer with a unique identifier, something like a social security number. So every time you go in there, they target-- they know what you buy. Target is able to use data analytics to basically take seemingly unimportant data such as lotions, whether you buy scented lotions or unscented lotions, to determine with uncanny accuracy when a woman is pregnant and when that woman is due, so that they can target advertisements to them, okay? Now, and that woman doesn't ever need to buy a pregnancy test, okay? Now, if that sounds creepy, what they can do, what they then do is-- if that sounds creepy, how would you like it if one of your teenage daughters-- you found out your teenage daughter was pregnant from Target? That actually did happen to a family outside of Minneapolis. A teenage girl was receiving diaper coupons and advertisements from Target. The father was outraged and went to complain. A month later, the father found out his daughter was pregnant, okay? It is imperative that effective and meaningful policies and procedures need to be established. There is no doubt in my mind that everyone in this room and all our teachers want what's best first for our children, but you need to devote the resources, the staff, the time, and money to address the problem. No one wants our property taxes increased, but I'd much rather have my property taxes increased and make sure my kids are safe online than worrying about property taxes increasing. Our children are only being put further at risk if you don't pay attention to this issue now and devote the funds necessary to address it. Otherwise, we could have Mailchimp, ClassDojo, or anyone else telling us the hell, what our kids are doing, or anything like that, and personally, that's what I don't want. Now, I know some of the information I've given might seem a little crazy, but I do have New York Times articles here so you can validate that, including the Target case.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Julie Lobby, 505 York Road. Speaking on the calendar tonight, like I've done, I think, for eight years now, so an idea for draft two, just two suggestions. First, with the Christmas-- being that Christmas is on Friday, already talking to some parents that I've come across with PK now, a lot of them already have to work Monday and Tuesday. Not everyone gets that whole week off. And if you even have-- see what other school districts have done around here, Texas even, Florida, even this past year, they went to school Monday, some of them went Tuesday or Wednesday with Christmas coming up. My recommendation would be to maybe have school Monday and Tuesday on the 29th, well, 20th, or 19th and 20th, and then have them come back even on January 6th. It's usually cold anyways. We've had a couple of years of cold weather. But that's a suggestion, because not everyone, like I said, can take off, but it still gives teachers time to hopefully get their shopping done. Other suggestion is, because a lot of people have already made plans even for this year, being Easter Sunday, we're doing that day off after spring break this year. I think you should suggest or consider doing that again on April 4th, that that day is off after spring break. A lot of families are going to go away, have an extra week out here with their families out of town, have families come in, have a whole day on Sunday with Easter and church and everything else. So maybe you can consider again coming back April 5th instead of April 4th. Those are my only recommendations, but great job on how you have it set up right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Just sit down. Anita. Bob, do you want to just tell us about the FOIA request we've had since our last meeting?
Sure, we have had three FOIA requests. The first one coming from Mr. Bob Skolnick from the Riverside Brookfield Landmark Newspaper, copies of all legal bills from School District 96 that has paid or incurred regarding the former superintendent from July 1 through July 1, 2013, through January 13, 2015, some total of the amount of money that District 96 has paid to attorneys or law firms for work related to the investigation or negotiation with the former superintendent, total amount that District 96 has paid the law firm, Forensic Radlet, from April 2, 2014, to January 13, 2015, and copies of all legal bills and all telephone conversations, consultations, and telephone meetings between any members of the District 96 Board of Education and Forensic Radlet from April 2, 2014, up to and including January 12, 2015. Second one submitted a separate request for a list of all the dates upon which the Riverside School District 96 Board of Education entered into closed session and the time period from June 1, 2013, and January 21, 2015, a list of all tape recordings of closed sessions, discussions of the Board of Education took place from June 1, 2013, up to January 22nd, and a list of any and all tapes of the Board of Education closed session that took place from June 1, 2013, up to and including January 20th that are currently not physically in the administrative offices of District 96. And the third one, Mr. Skolnick also submitted an additional request for a copy of any and all letters sent by Mr. Matt Cindy, President of the Riverside Brookfield High School, District 28 Board of Education, to Ms. Mary Rosmandia, the President of Riverside District 96 Board of Education, during the time period of January 1, 2015, up to and including February 3, 2015. And also a letter, the copy of the letter of resignation submitted to the board from Ms. Jody Knabey, staff member at Hauser Junior High.
Thank you. Announce, I don't have any to add?
We have several from each of our school principals. All of our schools are-- all of our elementary schools, I should say, are participating or have participated in the design and ad contest. The 4th and 5th grade students throughout District 96 have been invited to participate in the RB Landmark's Design and Ad Contest. Entry forms and local business information have been sent home. Students who prepared for the month of February to design an ad for local businesses, the entries will be submitted by March 2, and students can turn in the completed entry form to their school office. And hopefully, we will have students that are selected and published in the March 25 edition of the newspaper. At Ames Coffee Talk, Mr. Guerman and the ELL teachers will be holding their first coffee talk for our bilingual parents and parents that are in the-- or students of the ELL program. Student Council Closed Drive, the Ames School Student Council is sponsoring a closed drive to support the National Children's Cancer Society. They're asking families to donate any new or gently-used clothing and about boxes outside the library through the month of February. The School Home Science Connection, all 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students at Ames have been invited to participate in Science in a Bag. The program is an excellent opportunity for children to increase their scientific inquiry and for families to interact academically. The Positive Behavior Program, the Ames PBS team now has developed a positive behavior program for kindergarten, 1st, and 5th grade students at Ames. The kickoff assembly for our 5th grade program took place today, and the PBS team, 5th grade teachers, agreed to use the ClassDojo app for students that focuses on positive behaviors in school, very timely. Also, the Ames School Family Dance was held on February-- excuse me, it was held on Friday, January 38 at the gym. They had a DJ photo booth, smoothies for all to enjoy. Our students and families had a great time dancing the night away. Girls on the Run Program, registration for Spring 2015 began on Monday. Girls on the Run, Chicago is a nonprofit organization that inspires girls to be joyful, healthy, and confident using a fun, experience-based curriculum that creatively integrates running. It's a 12-week curriculum-based program for girls in 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade that combines training for a 5K event with the powerful lessons on nutritious, nutrition, fitness, teamwork relationships, and leadership. At Blythe Park, the Bulldog Book Challenge. Throughout the month of February, Blythe Park will be working to achieve the Bulldog Book Challenge. Students have pledged the number of fiction and informational texts that they will read throughout the month of February, and Blythe Park will keep track of the school-wide goal throughout the entire month with hope of meeting and beating our target number. Kindness Counts, Filling the Blythe Park Bucket. Blythe Park will also participate in the Kindness Counts, Filling the Bucket. In addition to improving reading ability, students will have-- will be working on a school-wide goal of kindness. Each teacher will be given a bag of stones. A glass jar with water with a marked line will be placed in the office. Students who make an extra effort to be kind and helpful to those around them will be given a stone to place in the jar. Throughout February, we will see how many can fill our-- how high we can fill our bucket with the kindness stones. Blythe has some pretty amazing kids, so our bucket should be overflowing. Parent University, Blythe Park will be hosting its second parent university this Thursday, February 19. The focus will be on the upcoming park assessment and how parents can help support their child throughout the assessment process. At Central, Chicago Steel Hockey Team visits Central School on tomorrow, Tuesday, February 18. Students at Central School will be visited by members of the Chicago Steel Hockey Team. The athletes will showcase their skills during PE classes and answer any student questions during their presentation. Science in a Can is starting up again at Central. The Science Enrichment Program is sponsored by the PTO and is offered to kindergarten, 2nd, and 4th grade students at Central School. Science cans go out on Fridays, so families can complete a simple science experience over the weekend. The Flying Carpet Club, the junior grade program at Central is well underway. 74 students meet once a week in a small group during lunch recess from January 12 through March 16. Club members read the story of the week prior to the meeting days and come prepared to talk about what they have read. The goal is to promote shared inquiry and a quality exchange of ideas. At Hollywood, the National PTA Reflections Program would like to congratulate Jonah Schachsnader and Makoto Shurman for advancing to the state level after winning district level for the National PTA Reflections Program. The World Would Be a Better Place If Competition. Jonah is a district winner for his photography entry, and Makoto is a district winner for his music composition entry. These entries, along with other participants from District 96, will be displayed on February 19 at Ames School during the Spotlight Celebration of Art and Community. The Food Drive, Hollywood Student Council and Brookfield Police Department teamed up to collect almost 300 items of food for the St. Barbara Food Pantry. Mr. Schremer's 5th grade class won the prize for the most items collected for a class with over 60, and the early learners won the best box design for their Olaf Snowman box. Early Learners Program Information Night was on January 28, and Hollywood hosted an information night for Early Learners Program. The turnout was very good, and expectations for a full program next year are very high. Coffee with the Principal was held-- will be held on Thursday, February 26 at 9:00 AM in the Hollywood Library. And lastly, Hauser. The administrative team is gearing up for park assessments, which include five days of testing. The PTO Family Dinner took place on February 10 after the boys' basketball game with Linda. The Hauser PTO Book Fair took place the week of February 9. The Hauser 8th grade team worked with RB High School on vertical articulation in math, English Language Arts, Social Studies, and Science on the Friday, February 13 Institute Day. The Hauser Drama Department has been working diligently in preparing the spring musical Mary Poppins. Mrs. Bettencourt and Mrs. Van Holzer are piloting a new after-school co-curricular focusing on Vex Robotics. And the boys' volleyball season will begin-- soon began-- oh, excuse me, season began in January with a full 10-season game. And that is all I have.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation from our auditor, Evans Marshall Pease, on the fiscal year 2013-2014 audit.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Rolles, and I'm a partner with Evans Marshall Pease. I'm here to present the audit from last June audit. Before we get to any questions, just briefly, a couple of things I'll point out different from the previous year. Previous years, we've been on regulatory basis. Again, this year, we are regulatory reporting. It is-- it's modified accrual this year, which is different than in the past. In the past, it was just cash basis. So you'll see when you're diving into that, that it's a little bit different than what you've seen, although the differences between cash basis and the modified accrual basis are not that significant here, although there are some changes. Again, modified accrual gives you a little bit better presentation on matching your expenditures and your revenues on an annual basis. Cash basis, you're kind of, you know, at the mercy of when you pay bills, when the county, you know, sends bills out for property taxes. So there's fluctuations that normally occur in cash basis that kind of get leveled off a little bit when you get the modified accrual basis. So, you know, going-- changing to that basis will help in that regard. Again, the difference is this particular year wasn't that major, but they could be, you know, depending on what you're looking at, and if you have substantial payables at the end of one year and haven't been paid, you might have been paid the next year, this year, this time, you know, going forward, it'll be in the right year as when the work was done or the service is rendered. Other than that, it's pretty much comparable to the previous year. You haven't-- you didn't have any single audit required. You didn't spend over $500,000 federal monies, as was done in the past year. Your district kind of ebbs and flows with the money that you collect. It's in federal monies. You're right on that border of $500,000, so if you have $500,000 of expenditures, you need a single audit done. You're right on that border, so sometimes you cross that and you need a single audit, sometimes you don't. So it's kind of back and forth. One thing that might help the district in that regard is they're raising that level. So you may not be seeing single audits again for a while, but they don't ever tend to raise it really enough to make it efficient, so it'll help for a while, but then you'll probably catch up to that as well. But that aside, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
What's a single audit?
Single audit is a government regulation if you get federal monies. If you spend over $500,000, there are testing that is required on certain programs that you have money in, Title I, Title II, that sort of thing. If you're under $500,000, they're included in the audit, but they're not specifically audited necessarily like they would be if you were over $500,000.
Certain programs have to be specifically audited.
Right. You add them all up, if you spend over $500,000, then you're required to a single audit. Then you can take the one step further and go through which program you should look at in depth for that year, and then do an audit just on that program.
Any other-- anybody have any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be our first action item of the evening. I would like a motion that the Board of Education accept the previous meeting minutes as follows. Minutes of the regular business meeting, January 20, 2015. Minutes of the closed session meeting number one, also January 20, 2015. Minutes of the second closed session of January 20, 2015. Minutes of the Finance Committee meeting, February 3, 2015. Minutes of the Special Board meeting, February 3, 2015. And minutes of the closed session meeting, February 3, 2015. May I have a motion to approve all of those minutes? Simone?
Second.
Anita? Randy Brockway.
Hi.
Rachel Morella.
Hi.
Michael O'Brien.
Hi.
Rich Regan.
Hi.
Mary Rosmandia.
Hi.
Motion is passed. Thank you. Next, Pavna, district priorities and calls?
Up on the screen and also in your packets are the monthly updates from each of the departments regarding the-- and the schools regarding the district strategic goals. And the first one, to ensure innovative and challenging experiences to optimize teaching and learning for Objective 1, we had training for staff administering the DLM, which is the assessment for students with special needs, and that'll be held from March 23 through May 1. They also started a vocabulary pilot program in the middle school to increase focus on vocabularies, was identified as one of our needs in English Language Arts curriculum. Training for middle--
Excuse me, a second. Could you speak up a little bit?
Sure. Trainings for middle school staff on the Ten Marks Math Program also started. Winter data meetings were held in each of our schools to determine the instructional and groping needs of all of our students. Objective 2, to prepare students to be college, career, and community-ready. Our special ed leadership team is reviewing rubrics to assist school teams in reflecting on student independence in order to prepare students for future educational and life experiences, and our students will begin taking the parked assessments, practice park For Objective 3, to hire, develop, and retain highly quality professionals for professional development this month. We had our first-- or, excuse me, our second of our two institute days on Friday, so peer professionals were supporting the instructional process. The focus was on instructional strategies to support what students have learned, as well as ways to support student independence. Special education teachers and related service providers were also working on writing IEP goals to the Common Core State Standards. And then throughout the month, there is more information and staff development on Google. Staff explored how to advance features of tools built into the Google Drive environment, including how to make the most of documents, presentations, drawing, and data. Our Power School for Support Staff, all of our building secretaries, and some of our district office staff also attended a training on Friday with our technology leaders. They were in service on how the district's student information system and how to input and update student emergency contact information in order to centralize and standardize the formatting of the student data. And throughout the month and the first week of March, our staff is going to be trained on the professional development for park assessments, what are the different modules, and how to practice the tests. For Goal Area 2, for financial and operational excellence. Objective 1, our monthly-- Mr. Sellers prepared monthly budget project statements. They've been provided to the board, as well as to each of the school principals and the departments, and presented this at February 3, a revised financial projection that incorporates a favorable development of specific cost categories. And also, we're getting-- we're in the process of preparing the 1516 budget development. Mr. Sellers presented this to the district leadership team, a new software that inquires justification statements depending upon the requested amount and the cross-category. So we'll have a systemized procedure of each principal and director requesting monies for their departments for the next year's budget development. Objective 2, develop a district facilities plan that considers enrollment projections, space concerns, safety, technology, and curriculum needs. We completed the installation of the content filtering solution of the new fiber internet connection this past week. We established new internet services for the fiber WAN connectivity, continued the evaluation testing of district's wireless network performance, focused on areas that will be utilized for park testing. Meetings with a newly engaged school architect, Leggett, have occurred, and specific recommendations that you'll hear about a little bit later this evening were also discussed at the Board Finance Committee meeting on February 3. Inspections of the Blythe Park roof were delayed due to weather conditions. That was one of the things that we talked about on February 3. And then corrigings to assess the conditions of parking lots are currently in progress, and the life, safety, and accessibility inspections, our studies are in the planning stages. The work of the demographer, Dr. John Casada, is in progress, and all of the forums gathering of the information by District 96 staff members have been completed. For Objective 3, implement efficient and consistent operational processes and procedures for purchasing and accounting to improve the documentation of related internal financial controls. We completed the migration of the teacher websites to a premise-based server, to the district's cloud-based web host. We're continuing to research and coordinating with consultants to identify viable options for directory services and server infrastructure redesign. We talked about that a little bit at our Technology Steering Committee. And accounts have been added, changed, and deleted during an ongoing process of reviewing compliance of the chart of accounts with the Illinois Program of Accounting Manual. Objective 4, to achieve GAZB compliance within two years and favorable and unqualified opinion regarding the accuracy and sufficiency of financial statements. The 1314 audit and annual financial reports were prepared under a modified accrual basis. You heard about that a little bit this evening, as well as on February 3. The company, the Industrial Presidential, has been engaged to accomplish a re-inventory of all fixed assets and also adding on the technology devices. And then Donlin Associates have been engaged to complete a once-every-two-year actuarial study on the liability of other post-employment benefits. And then the above-mentioned activities, once finalized, will render District 96 compliant with GAZB, which is one of the goal areas. And our last goal area of rigorous communication. Objective 2, to enhance regular communication, improve community engagement. 8th grade teachers met with special education-- Eighth grade teachers met with special education director at RB High School to prepare students for the transition to high school. Communication has been successful for the early learners preschool program. Registration opened on February 2nd. Of the 30 spots for the community tuition-paying students, only four spots are remaining for the 15, 16 school year. We also hosted educational speaker Josh Gunderson on Monday, February 9th, for information regarding internet safety, cyberbullying, and digital footprint awareness to parents. And then he did a follow-up presentation at all of our schools for fourth through eighth graders on Tuesday and Wednesday. We also began contacting school districts regarding a senior volunteer program, and this is something that we are hoping to consider implementing for the 15, 16 school year, of getting senior citizens in our area to volunteer at our school. And we heard about this a little bit earlier, but Aim School held its first breakfast with principal for parents of students in the English Language Learners Program. And that is all I have.
Okay. David, are you able to provide us with the facilities improvement for summer 2015, just a progress update?
Yes. The board was sent materials via email and distributing some hard copy. And I apologize for this not being ready earlier, but we were in the throes of discussing with our architect exactly what viable options we had in our immediate future. So bear with me while I distribute these. What I would like to emphasize in this sheet right here, the landscape with the blue first draft, is that we have facilities improvement needs that fall under the category of architect services being rendered, and all of the plans and specifications will be formally developed by the architect, but also facilities needs that will be managed in-house. So over on the far right, I have an A and an I to indicate what will be architect managed and what will be in-house managed. And we don't have a lot of categories to present at this time. We may have more information on March 3rd. My understanding is that we'll be given an opportunity on March 3rd to talk more about facilities, and the reason why we had to delay was the weather. But if I could just briefly go through the priorities and the items. Priority one, we have paving and roof sections replacement. We've had some discussions about those. Both of those initiatives require coring and analysis of the current conditions. And I'll go into a little bit more about that later on. Priority two, we've, as a school district, been aware that we don't have any exterior to the building's security cameras. So we've been looking into that. We've been talking to a couple of different companies. We've had a company come by and do their own survey for free, just to give us some advisement about what options we should be looking at. So I'm plugging in some numbers here, just to make you aware that we'll be coming back with a recommendation about security cameras, both for the exterior of the buildings and to increase the quantities that we have within the buildings. We have at Central a problem with the sloping of the entrance that goes down and rainwater. You know, it seems like the 20-year rain is now every five years, and the five-year rain is every year. So we have a couple of initiatives related to that, and we would jackhammer and replace the concrete and put in an additional drain. At the same time, we're going through efforts to have those drains camered. They put cameras and they actually follow the length of the pipe. We did find some blockage, and we're in the process of having the blockage of a particular drain cleared. But regardless of replacing, or I'm sorry, correcting that drain pipe, every contractor we've talked to, every person we've had come by and looked at the situation, they immediately say, you know, your concrete sloping toward the building is working against you. So we'd like to do something about that. We have a need for an additional truck. We kind of hit the wall recently with snow removal. And I've, you know, I've been made aware that our maintenance guys are using their personal vehicles to transport equipment and tools that normally would be in a truck. It's kind of, I can't see a person using their own personal vehicle to transport a sewer rotor and doing things. But there is a shortage of vehicles. They have to do some things simultaneously. So anyway, we can give you more information about that. But basically, the two categories of justification for an additional truck would be so that we are not, we have 12 or more consecutive hours dedicated of using that one truck. We could be more efficient and be more responsive and be more ready for the opening of school during an emergency snow day or conditions. And then, you know, we can go into question and answer about that. And then replacing the carpet and going to tile in rooms five, six, and seven at Central are again related to the rainwater. This is not a very lengthy list. I'm not comfortable that it's captured, you know, a variety of needs. We still need to open lines of communication between the architect and our principals and have our principals be listening, request for facilities improvements from staff members. However, at the same time, it should be recognized that we just went through a $24 million program of facilities improvements. So a lot of things that had been outstanding and urgent needs have been addressed, and we're in very good shape. So it's nice that there is such a short list of things that the school district does need to do. Now, back to the paving and the roof sections. The corrings are being focused on the Hauser, Central, and Hollywood parking lots, and we won't really know what recommendations should be presented to the board until those results have been analyzed. And the Blithe Park roof sections certainly have a problem with an area that's trough in the center of the building, and we found that there is a defective installation, I would call it, with the flashing. So heavy, heavy rains, heavy snowfall has overwhelmed the way that that trough is flashed. And we're going to have that corrected in the near future. At the same time, we need to analyze all the roofs. We've gotten two opinions. One company says, well, you could still get between two and five years more out of your existing roof. Another company says, well, you know, I don't know if you, you know, you might have problems in six months or four years. Either way, they're kind of not being committal. Therefore, doing corrings is necessary. And what we're looking for in the corrings is determine if there's a collection of moisture in the roofing material. If there's moisture underneath the roofing material, then it's failing, and that's due to age because of the 20-plus years of the roofing material itself. So we were going to have the architect come and talk to you this evening, but we thought, well, none of this is in anything but an initial draft form. So I'm doing my best to kind of explain the topics, and the architect is working to gain clarity and make recommendations that will be specific. At this time, we're not ready for that, so I'm just advising you of basically what progress has been made and the general categories that we're interested in pursuing in the discussions in the near future. So at this time, I'd just like to answer any questions about what I've presented. So far, the rest of what I handed out is basically reiterating what I've just said, you know, the architect advising that things are uncertain. And I also handed out the written opinion from Ridgeworth Roofing, one of the two companies we've had actually book for.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do. How did we decide? I know that security cameras have come up in a number of meetings. I don't know, made a decision. What kind of security cameras are we talking about, and who would be monitoring the cameras?
Well, I'm going to answer as best I can. We don't monitor cameras, generally speaking, because it's been proven that somebody watching the video screens of the cameras, there's a lot of human error in that. There will be the ability to look at what's going on in the camera at any given time, but there will not be staff dedicated to that purpose. Cameras are a deterrent. When an area is known to be under surveillance, it tends to control, you know, the expectations for good behavior, et cetera. And I know that we had a problem with a particular incident that certainly made this more of an item for discussion regarding a particular suit. So the need for exterior cameras was, I understand, of interest to the board. So we brought in a company that said, okay, if you want to do exterior cameras, here's how you'll position them. So I don't know if I answered your question.
I mean, yes and no. I just was wondering why it came up again. Where would we, this would be a project for every building on the exterior, I understand. Probably there's been incidents. What interior areas would you put cameras?
I don't have any answers about that. What it does is engage the services of a company that is right now undertaking a review and will be developing recommendations. I think a reasonable step forward is the kind of magnitude of investment that I'm putting here. One of your questions was what type of cameras. Cameras that will not overburden our network, cameras that will be available for administrators to see with a great deal of latitude what's going on anywhere if there is an emergency situation, that are interactive in that, that are basically state-of-the-art. And what we have in place currently, my understanding is that it's, we have overly costly head end in some areas, so we can, there's a payback on upgrading our head-end equipment, and then going to high-resolution cameras that will be able to, through digital technology, you'll be able to review what went on in a particular location that a camera captured and see with a degree of vividness. And the vividness does not exist today, and the recommendation will be that we eventually go toward a high-resolution camera.
Okay. I guess my question's not so much what type of cameras are we going to put in. I'm looking to see, do we have, are we putting cameras in where we don't currently have monitoring? Or are we placing equipment?
We're doing an assessment of what is it that we currently have. And I think this came up a few meetings ago. We tabled it from last year as a discussion for priority when we were going to hire an architect, that that would be a complete facilities review. Our architect shared with us that they do not have a security camera division, and had to hire an outside company to do the analysis. So right now, this is just at no cost to us. We're providing you the information, and then the board can make a, you know, make a decision to see how much or if and where we want to put these cameras.
From what I understand, we have cameras at some of the entrances to our building on the inside typically. A camera on the inside of the building focusing on the exterior door. But it is not uniform. It's kind of hit and miss. So I think that started the conversation some time ago, and I brought it up. I was concerned about this. I'm glad that it's reappeared, and I'm glad, I'm surprised that the architect's not going to be involved in this, but are you confident with the firm that has come to us on this issue?
I think so. I've been involved in the expansion of a camera system incrementally over time and seen the benefits and had anecdotal stories that will be gathered to let you know the value of the cameras as time goes by, and at a certain time, they became very useful. Those are the types of things that I think affirm the importance of having some kind of a surveillance system. But at this point, I think as Dr. Charm Rose has indicated, we're really in an exploration. I thought I would put a hard number down here for at least you two, the Board of Education, to think about, because I doubt we're going to be able to do anything meaningful with improving our camera system without spending at least the kind of dollars that I put on this spreadsheet.
Appreciate that.
You know, this isn't a $10,000 improvement. It's more like an $80,000 improvement when you combine upgrading the capabilities that we currently have, going to some higher resolution, and also adding an exterior component that doesn't exist at all today. The cameras that are right outside of individual doors are, have a very isolated focus.
Okay. So we're having, there's a security firm who's going to come in or some to do an analysis and give us a recommendation sometime in the near future.
Over the next 30 days, it'll be ready.
Can I ask who the company is? Do you know?
The name of the company is Eyes on Youth Surveillance?
Okay.
Very highly qualified. I was very impressed with the representative, has a very good resume as far as this field.
Would this equipment fall under Mr. Tofano's scope of responsibilities to maintain?
And he's been involved with the discussion in the meeting. So the initial meetings were with Mr. Sellers, Mr. Tofano, Mr. Radke, and myself. And then Mr. Radke and the consultant did a full walkthrough of the buildings on Friday when there was no students in the building. And then she'll come back in the next couple of weeks with some type of a proposal. But yes, Mr. Tofano was involved in the initial discussions because it does involve, as David said, you know, not impacting our infrastructure.
I would also suggest that our IT Advisory Committee, am I using the right term, Michael, on that?
The Steering Committee.
Steering Committee. The IT Steering Committee weigh in on this issue and contribute to the conversation.
Well, one of the strengths of this particular company is that they would kind of leave Mr. Tofano unburdened. This would be a system that would run independent and parallel, and only connect at particular head-end points. Mr. Tofano has a lot on his plate, and basically what we're looking for with a camera system is a turnkey system that just does exactly what it's supposed to do, and is uncomplicated to operate and captures all of the images that you can imagine. A lot of times, this type of a system is under the building's grounds umbrella of responsibility because it's not really anything that has, there's nothing relating to student learning or technology that benefits a classroom. It's more of a facilities-type initiative. But certainly, we've got Mr. Tofano engaged with this initiative, and he'll, he'll be part of the discussions that will be taking place.
All right. Thanks. Mike, would you like to give us a report from the Finance Committee?
Sure.
Excuse me, I have another.
I'm sorry.
Question on the, for David. The carpet replacement on these rooms, these are central rooms?
Yes.
And are they directly related to this sloping concrete entrance issue with the drainage?
And are they directly related to this sloping concrete issue with the drainage? Are they?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there have been occurrences, heavy rains, and some moisture seeping underneath carpeting. And I, there's been some damage to the carpeting and it's at a low level.
Yeah.
Making it a non-carpeted set of classrooms rather than carpeted was actually expected when the renovations took place, but the opening of school came too soon and they decided to carpet over what is an area that was originally planned for tile. So the carpeting's not working out very well. Let's go to tile. It's definitely going to assuage the concerns of the people that are teaching those classrooms about any kind of a musty smell or accumulation of moisture being captured in or underneath the carpet.
I guess that leads to the question, is there, is there more of an immediate need to take care of this?
Next summer would be fine.
Okay. So we haven't had recent flooding that has presented additional problems?
We've had to, in this fall, clean the carpet and, you know, use the suction equipment. But it could wait. We may have to do some more, we may have to give it some more attention if we have heavy rains in the spring, but certainly by the summertime, and we really won't have a feasible opportunity to replace the carpeting until over the summer weeks. But it wouldn't be a long project. It started soon after school lets out. And it does involve in the cost that's built into it, re-leveling of the floor.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Mike, Finance Committee report.
Finance Committee met on February 3rd. We are going to have a presentation by Karen Balades on SB 16, but that was canceled due to SB 16 being pulled and currently rewritten. So once that bill is re-presented, we will have her back. We are also going to have the presentation of the audit, but that was delayed. I think the auditor was using the classic Dojo app to compile it, but that was presented to us today. David reviewed the IMET loss potential and the scenario, how it happened and why it's too early to estimate the loss and the amount to recover. So we'll keep getting updates on that. The architects presented a little bit of a life safety plan and the direction they're going, but also pointed out the two issues that we heard earlier about the blithe roof and the pavement at the school. David also presented the budget guidelines going forward for the next budgeting year. And then our next meeting will be in April where we hope to, Mary Rose and I will have an update on the hiring of a new auditing firm.
And, Art isn't here, but our next Education Committee meeting is?
March 3rd.
March 3rd. All right. Bobna, would you like to just update us on the Policy Working Committee?
Sure. Mary Rose and I met on February 3rd and have made some good progress and are up to date in your board packet. You will see that we are recommending all of the policies from Press Issue 87, which I believe were from October. So once we get those reviewed for our first reading and then next meeting, they'll be up for second reading, we will be all caught up with our press policy updates just in time for the April review. And we are going to be approving, or you will be approving, the second reading and final adoption of Press Issue 86, which is also in your packet.
All right. And then I see Don is not here, so we will not be having a report from the Technology Steering Committee. I guess, Bobna, I would like to request that maybe the issue that Dave Varsadi brought up today, which would be privacy and policies procedures, particularly with regard to privacy and security, maybe be put on the upcoming agenda?
The next meeting is Thursday. I know Mr. Tofano's working on that, but I will have, it's all right, Mr. Varsadi, I would like to have Mr. Tofano follow up with you since he's not here tonight and get your concerns specifically and then see how we can address them. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, any report from the REC? Thank you. All right. Now, some motions for our financial action items. I would like a motion that the Board of Education approve the list of general invoices. Schedule A 754, these would be the payable pre-list as of January 30th, 2015, and the payable pre-list as of February 17th, 2015. May I have a motion?
Some move?
Second.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Mary Rosmandia?
Aye.
The motion is passed. Okay. Next, I would like a motion that the Board of Education approve the District 96 Fiscal Year 2013-2014 Audit by Evans Marshall and Peace. May I have a motion?
Some move?
Second.
Okay. Rich Regan?
Aye.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Mary Rosmandia?
Aye.
Okay. The motion is passed. All right. Next, for first reading is the 2015-2016 School Calendar. Any comments on this?
I do. As light of comments, I'd like the opening remarks when you have, Ms. Lobby, express a couple of concerns. If you'd like to hear ideas if that is amenable to people or, because if you're, we're going to take days out, that's the problem with working with the calendar. If we're going to take days out, then where are we going to tack those days on, at the beginning of the year or the end of the year? Is everyone okay with the calendar as is?
I took a look at it. I don't see any other way. We'd have to either extend the year, beginning or at the end. I don't see any other days we can take out. It looks to me, it's essentially, it's identical, with the exception of early release, to the way it is this year.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you had mentioned in the memo, there was a slight variation between RB. Which days were there slight variations to for the winter break and the spring break?
The spring break is the same. The winter break is what Mrs. Lobby spoke about. They are going to be going from Wednesday?
The 23rd.
The 23rd to January 6th. And that is due to finals.
Well, so RB is taking off the 23rd, correct?
Yes. That'll be their first day of winter break and they'll go until, and then the other two feeders, which is 94 and 95, are following this calendar. And the reason being is really just the, you know, preservation. We had agreed as elementary districts that having those split weeks of Monday, Tuesday, we're not sure how much instruction's really going to get done, especially on weeks of the holiday. And then you come back and the same thing, you have a three-day week. I know that was one of the concerns that, for last year's calendars, to have as many whole weeks as possible.
I agree with that principle. I think it's better to have full weeks of school if we can as opposed to, you know, all these disrupted weeks. And there's very, it's a slight variation from RB.
Thanks.
Anybody else have any comments about it?
I'd support that as well.
Okay.
The full weeks.
All right.
As much as possible.
The only way I could see that we take a day, we could steal a day, is at March 25th. We have that slated for spring break.
Steal it for?
I'm pushing it to?
It's Good Friday. March 25th is Good Friday.
That's true. Yikes. But then if we pushed it, because that last day in June, June 2nd, is that a full day or a half day?
Full day.
And they, there's no Friday where they pick up the report card for 10 minutes and we call it a day anymore, right?
No.
When is graduation?
For this year?
No, I guess June 2016, I don't know yet.
We don't have that date, so I have to look up. But this year, we've changed it to Friday, June 5th, and we'll talk about that when we talk about the amended calendar.
You can push one of the E1 days for, no, then we'd extend it, we'd be extending the school year. See, it's hard to?
Right to Monday.
Right. We're, right now, we're maxed out.
You're looking, I'm missing, we're adding a day to?
No, just discussion.
Okay. But what was the reason for, is to start later? I don't know why we need, is it for the winter break? I wasn't sure.
Yeah, well, my concern would be the winter break on that Monday or Tuesday for comments. And then with RB, I think it puts some parents out on the 21st and 22nd who might have kids going to RB.
It's half-days. So they're done, Dr. Skink had said, by 11:30.
Yeah. All right. You know what, then, I mean, what Randy and Rachel echo, we're trying, you know, I know when we went through the drafting and that discussion, we're trying to keep whole weeks together as much as possible. And if we take days out, then we disrupt that philosophy.
Plus, I'm thinking based upon the way that this is scheduled, that whoever has the day camps for off-school, whether it be McCook, The Village, I think they would probably correspond with the calendar we have as is.
Right.
So I think we should stick with what we have here.
All right.
All right. No specific changes then at this time? All right, we just have a move that we advance this calendar to first reading. Who would like to, the calendar is presented. Who would like to make that motion?
Is it for our first reading or is it approve a?
No, we're?
First draft.
It's a first draft. We're going to advance it to first reading.
Oh, okay.
And so, I mean, there will still be 30 days for first suggestions and comments, but right now.
Okay. I will make that motion.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Excuse me. Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Mary Rosmandia?
Aye.
And the motion is passed.
And I just want to make one comment that I alluded to earlier about the amended calendar. We won't officially amend the calendar for this school year. My suggestion would be to wait until April or May until we make sure that there's no other emergency days being used. But right now, we're tentatively planning on Friday, June 5th being the last day and Mr. Dragan's already sent out the communication to parents that graduation will be Friday, June 5th. And due to additional space, we're going to have it at RB High School.
Cool. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to deal with the policies we've been dealing with in the Working Committee. So the first one would be board policies for second and final, for second reading and final adoption from IASB Press Issue 86. I would like a motion that the Board of Education approve following board policies. Policy 2:20, powers and duties of Board of Education indemnification. Policy 2:200, types of school board meetings. Policy 2:220, school board meeting procedures. Policy 2:230, public participation at school board meetings and petitions to the board. Policy 4:60, purchases and contracts. Policy 5:30, hiring process and criteria. Policy 5:260, student teachers. Policy 5:330, educational support personnel. Sick days, vacation, holidays, and leaves. Policy 7:180, prevention and response to bullying, intimidation, and harassment. Policy 7:20, harassment and students prohibited. And Policy 7:240, conduct code for participants in extracurricular activities. May I have a motion?
Some move?
Second.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Mary Rosmandia?
Aye.
Motion is passed. All right. The next set is board policies, again, a second reading and final adoption for five-year review policies from IASB Press Issue 86. I would like a motion that the following, that the Board of Education adopt the following policies. Policy 2:40, board member qualifications. Policy 2:50, board member term of office. Policy 2:60, board member removal from office. Policy 2:80, board member oath and conduct. Policy 2:240, board policy development. Policy 4:40, incurring debt. Policy 4:55, use of credit and procurement cards. Policy 4:90, activity funds. Policy 5:310, compensatory time off. Policy 7:170, damage to school property. And Policy 7:200, suspension procedures. May I have a motion to approve those board policies for final adoption?
Some move?
Second.
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Mary Rosmandia?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Motion is passed. And the last group of policies, these would be for first reading only, IASB Press Issue 87. I would like a motion that the Board of Education approve the following policies for first reading. Policy 2:140, communications to and from the board. Policy 2:2140E, guidance for board member communications, including email use. Policy 4:10, fiscal and business management. Policy 4:45, insufficient fund checks and debt recovery. Policy 4:45, I'm sorry, Policy 4:110, transportation. Policy 4:120, food services. Policy 4:130, free and reduced price food services. Policy 4:150, facility management and building programs. Policy 5:10, equal employment opportunity and minority recruitment. Policy 5:130, responsibilities concerning internal information. Policy 5:185, family and medical leave. Policy 5:220, substitute teachers. Policy 5:250, leaves of absence. Policy 6:20, school year calendar and day. Policy 6:60, curriculum content. Policy 6:110, programs for students at risk of academic failure and/or dropping out of school and graduation incentive programs. Policy 6:280, grading and promotion. Policy 6:300, graduation requirements. Policy 6:310, high school credit for non-district experiences, course substitutions, re-entering students. Policy 6:340, student testing and assessment program. Policy 7:750, student, Policy 7:50, student, school admissions and student transfers to and from non-district schools. Policy 7:100, health, eye, and dental examinations, immunization. Policy 7:100, health, eye and dental examinations, immunizations and inclusion of students. Policy 7:220, buck conduct. Policy 7:270, administering medicines to students. Policy 8:20, community use of school facilities. May I have a motion to adopt these policies for first reading?
So moved?
Second.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Mary Rosmandia?
Aye.
The motion is passed.
All right. Next, I'd like to open up the floor to new business. The first item on the agenda would be to reopen discussion on the tax rebate grant program. I think, um, board members would like to take it further. We tabled, uh, further investigation of this at a previous meeting, a previous finance meeting. But we would like to direct the administration to do further work on it. Rich, have any-
I think David has done some great research on districts that have a rebate program. He presented it to us at the time that we heard it, we decided to table it, and I'd like to suggest that we take it up again.
Yes, and, um- How do we take it up? What do you think, we just go, I remember how this came forward, I know we had always talked about, the concern, I think it, you know, bothers some members of the community that we're sitting on money, and that we should, if it's, you know, above a certain threshold, we should look into giving some money back to, to the taxpayers. I certainly sympathize with that. But we're also trying to figure out how to, you know, increase our revenues. When the idea came up that some towns have a tax rebate idea, that X amount of dollars for, you know, each residence that can prove they've lived here in the district for four, five, whatever, whatever amount. And the model we were using was the city of Orland Park, and at that point, we had tabled it. And now, I think through Rich and Juliet bringing it up, I think we want to bring that discussion. But how do we, the question is, how do we proceed with that policy?
I think the first step we discussed was, we have to get a legal opinion to see how we'd administer it. And then, we, once we get that information, to proceed from there to decide, do we want to do it, or do we not want to do it? So I think that would be the first step, and that's something we could probably look at probably over the summer, if not sooner.
I guess it would be how we would structure it. We would have to pick some parameters, maybe that's one of the things we could, um, yes?
Well, if I could review the parameters that were presented previously, the average rebate would be $100, and there would be 4,223 taxpayers that are residential taxpayers. The number of tax bills within the district was 5,523. But out of that, 4,633 were residential. So the first parameter that was being suggested is to exclude commercial industrial, focus only on residential. And another parameter was, look only at residential taxpayers that had some longevity. And what was suggested was three consecutive years of having paid taxes under the same name, same PIN numbers. Those are easily obtainable, and you can analyze those records, which is what I did. And, uh, the parameters that I suggested was, um, it would be scaled depending upon the tax bill. If the property owner tax bill was $5,000 or less, they would receive an $80 rebate. 5,000 to 10,000 would be $100, and greater than 10,000 would be $120, recognizing the magnitude of the residential taxpayers' tax contribution to revenues of District 96. This, this document can be recirculated to board members. And if you would look at the parameters that are, that were suggested, the cost of that type of a methodology, which would average $100 per residential taxpayer, was $425,000. So I think the board needs to do a gut check on the, how much money could be set aside for this type of purpose, and actually, the budget development process for 2015, 16. That process could incorporate the pleasure of the board. But I, I think the board really, you know, needs to ask the questions about how this particular suggested approach fits with your expectations. And if, if it doesn't really match what you're interested in, then that would be something that we should probably hear early on, so that when we have discussions with our attorney about what the implementation procedures might entail, that your expectations are clear. I guess, is that enough?
Yeah, I, I, uh, listened to David, but also listened to Rachel. I remember we were going to talk to our attorney to see, you know, the feasibility, is it legal? Can we do it residential and exclude commercial, and try and draft that, which I'm okay with. But I, I think the question, if we are going to give our attorneys that direction, or in David's direction, are we okay with the dollar amounts of 80, 100 and 120? Do we want to lower that, or do we want to raise it?
80 was-
Uh, 5,000 or less. I don't know, anyone has-
5,000 was the total tax bill.
Yes, uh, 5 to 10, uh, was 100.
Okay.
And 10K or more gets you 120.
Was this based upon how Orland Park did it? Or was this just a formula that you came up with?
It's just a formula I came up with. First of all, I'm working backwards from a dollar amount that seemed to be, I don't know, passed the straight face test as far as allocating a significant amount of money. Just under a half a million dollars for this purpose is a significant effort by the school district financially. And then, I think, as a matter of principle, knowing that you want to recognize longevity is worthwhile to express in a model. And then also scaling it based upon how much that, because I know that Orland Park does it on a percentage basis, percentage rebate of the tax bill. And I am very hesitant to do it on a percentage basis, it adds a layer of complexity.
I agree, it's convoluted, and you're asking staff to get involved, or this is more clear cut.
Right, be, be simple, you know, achieve that dollar amount and express some of the values and appreciation that this kind of, of an approach would, would have. We would be the first school district to do this, to my knowledge, there isn't another public school. The only example of this happening is a municipality, to my knowledge. I could try and do further research, but I was unable to find a school district that had actually done this, so-
And this is Orland Park is the one municipality?
Yes, and their home rule, and they're not under the tax cap, per se. So when I discussed this with their financial officer, we weren't able to find the kind of parallels I was hoping to find as far as, as the same, you know, reasons for structuring it in a particular way. So I think the, really, the challenge is, A, does the Board, Board of Education of District 96 want to entertain this concept? And then, how do you want to express your own commitment to the magnitude of it, and how it translates into a benefit to you presumably residential only? Similarly, I, my understanding is that, is that differentiating between commercial industrial and residential would, would be allowed, and that there is, there's legal statute that would serve as a basis for that differentiation at your pleasure.
Well, I understand that OPRF actually had a committee, and I haven't followed up where they ended up, looking at their options. And the rebate, rebate, because they have the same issues we have, they have a high fund balance, trying to decide how do they bring their fund balance down to reasonable level. But I have, I need to look into, I'm not sure where it ended up, where they, what they decided to do, and where they came out on that. I, I think it's a good idea, but I think if we're going to do it, $425,000 is probably not going to get us where we need to go. I think if we're going to reduce our fund level, we need to figure out where are we with, what do we need to spend on things like technology? Big, big expenses that we have coming up. Once we decide that, we need to think, figure out, okay, how much do we have left in our fund balance that it probably exceeds where we should be at? And I think for starters, if you guys, the ISB Journal that we get that was left here, there was an article about fund balances in there as well. So I would take a look at that, too, just to take a look at, to think about where we should be at. What are, what, as board members, are we comfortable with? If we're going to do this, where are we comfortable in reducing our fund balance to? And I think it's a much better idea so that when going into tax levy time, we can preserve our tax levy status, but still maintain a reasonable fund balance to bring us back to kind of a level where we need to be at. So I, I think we need to come back and just talk about, we first need the legal opinion, and second of all, as a board, we need to come together and figure out what's our comfort level of what we think we should be at.
Well, you know, um, I don't like the fact that we'd be creating, we'd be the first district in Illinois that would have this tax rebate program. It seems like we'd be, uh, kind of inventing the wheel. We'd probably be investing, uh, a good amount of legal fees into this program. And for the, for the benefit of 100 to 80, $80 to $100 rebate, it, it seems like it's, um, we'd be, um, you know-
Spending $400,000 to give away $425,000?
Well, yeah, maybe, maybe you're saying, saying it better than I'm-
I don't think our legal fees would be that high, and we talked about the administrative fees reported, $18,000. I think we, if we're going to do it, and we're going to do it right, it's going to be a lot more than $425,000 to bring us down to where we should be. Because now we've already, we've, we've moved our debt service to another fund. So now we've got a better perspective of what we really have and what we're currently working with. But the question is, let's, let's, it would be a nominal amount of legal fees, if anything. You know, this hasn't the first time somebody's done it, OPRF may have done it, I don't know where they landed on that.
It's, OPRF did an abatement. Um, the difference, um, what this, this particular tax rebate program does for us is it doesn't reduce our tax base for future years. Whereas what, I, I think OPRF gave, Jesus, was it as much as 10 million? I mean, it was a substantial amount of money, they abated it. And, um, I can't remember if they found some sort of a mechanism where they didn't have to reduce their base. But they had some tools that we didn't, yes, David?
Well, OPRF is, I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll look into it, I can call over there and get, get the details, but they have, they have a debt service levy. Abating the debt service levy is an option that doesn't apply at District 96 because we do not have a debt service extension base. But we're, as I've mentioned a number of times, that's, that's a unique characteristic of this school district. I think, I'd like to offer three thoughts that the board needs to keep in mind. Number one, we're going to hear more about Senate Bill 16 from Karen Valdez. We have a life safety survey that we're hoping is going to be, you know, reasonably favorable as far as a financial burden. And I, I think the largest question mark looming in our financial future is whether or not the state decides to pass along pension costs, taking TRS from being 100% funded at the state level to being also funded at the local level. And I know that school districts are, are, are very nervous about that prospect, and that's not going away as an idea in Springfield.
David, um, I don't, do we know, first of all, I like your suggestion about incorporating sort of this analysis in our budget process. In other words, you know, you know, we're, if we give back $500,000, what does that do to us in terms of our long-term and short-term budgeting? We do have a, we should be looking at a strategic plan process as well, we can incorporate it in that. You know, in other words, long-term projections. But the other thing is, is there like a time of year you have to do this? You know, pass the rebate and then have the checks go out? Or can, because this is a grant program, we can do it anytime.
It's a grant program, you can do it at, at any time. I think the, the real attractiveness of this program, from, from a business manager's perspective, is that you're, you're not sacrificing your, you have, you have, you have limited legal authority under the tax cap. That, that, the tax cap formula, the property tax extension limitation law, is ironclad. This is a way of recognizing that the taxpayers are contributing to the school district, giving back a portion of their taxes, but without sacrificing your long-term legal authority. And that's what happens when, when school districts like OPRF. And I know that one year they did freeze their levy, just left the school district as, as, as levy for one year. It does have that, that, that side effect that is not, doesn't help the long-term financial forecast.
Rich, what do you think?
I think it's worthy of a deeper look at this point. We can, of course, with legal opinion, we can put the triggers that we want on this thing. It doesn't have to be an automatic every year, depending on economic conditions of that year. But I think it's, it's, it could be a valuable tool to have when, when the time is appropriate and when we want to initiate it.
All right, so what do you want to do? You want to just go to legal first and ask if we can, what would it look like? Do you want to spend it?
Let's, let's have David circulate what he, what he did before, and then, then maybe we can, what we can do is just bring it up at the next board meeting.
Do you want to ask him to run scenarios at 80, 100, 120, and all the way up to doubling it, to tripling it? Three different scenarios, or what?
I'd say doubling it.
To 850 and go on 160, 200, 240?
How do people feel about going up to being here five years versus three?
I think that can be another column on, on David's analysis.
All right, so before we go to the lawyers and they start hitting us with expenses, I think we go the David route?
Yeah.
And ask them to come back next meeting with scenarios of 80, 100, 120, and then doubling it to 160, 200, 240? And then going three years, consecutive years, and five years? Is that doable, David, or?
Three to five, okay. And to look at what the net impact is on our fund balance. I assume would this become out of our education fund? Or would it be?
Sure we got some pile sitting in the back, so we just take it out.
Isn't that the only place?
Where would it come out?
I think your, your largest cumulonimbus fund balance is in the education fund. You could, I could, I could look into whether or not we could do it out of working cash. So I'll, I'll, I'll explore that. I'll try and keep the interactions with, with our attorney to a minimum. But there are probably a couple of questions that I, I may need to ask.
That's fine.
As I'm developing these alternative scenarios. But I think you've given me some pretty clear direction as far as, as how you'd like to see it structured. And certainly, if a board member would like to see a different scenario, this is, this is not, I, I do have the program set up. All I have to do is plug in different parameters, and it'll come out with different results.
Okay, that sounded all right.
Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, this, um, all right, so we have consensus that David can do a little more work for us. Rich, if, um, is there any other new business item I knew you'd wanted to talk about? Getting information on how to do residency, how we're evaluating residency in the district?
Bob and I, and I are talking about that actually tomorrow. Bob has provided some information this afternoon.
All right, and then David and I had talked about this- All right, and then David and I had talked about this earlier, and he had, um, thought it might be useful to do an administrative, to report on, um, providing us some information on, excuse me, our procedures, and also, um, some of the numbers of how often we, um, sort of the percentage of people we reject for enrollment because of residency.
I think Dr. Sherman Rose has been working with, uh, our...
Yeah, it provided at the same...
...registrar, Nancy Schuman, and we can, we can, uh, we can provide a management report on that topic.
Okay.
Yeah, and a copy was sent to you.
This afternoon, right. I did get a copy this afternoon.
Okay, I think I did, I did get a chance to look at it.
That's okay, and if you want something different or additional, we can work on it.
All right. All right, so we have a wait forward. You're gonna, um...
Yeah.
We're gonna spearhead, um...
Just to review, and I think it's important that we, we review procedures, especially when we're, you know, we've commissioned a demographic study at this point. We just need to make sure our procedures are what they should be.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you for doing that, Rich.
Uh, new business items?
That's, do you have one, Randy?
Yeah, I do. Uh, this issue that you brought to our attention tonight, Mr. Barsetti, um, I would like to, maybe have a little discussion about that tonight, if we could, um, to piggyback on your comments and so forth. You raised some serious concerns, and, um, you mentioned a couple of these, whether software programs, specifically this class dojo, and you, and MobiMax. Can you say that both of them are being used in our schools?
Yes. They're being used in our, our school classes.
Yes.
I guess I would just like to see if the board shares my concern about moving forward with this, uh, discussion, or...
Yep.
...to hearing maybe more from, uh, Mr. Barsetti tonight?
From what I understand is that this, and being involved in some of the Technology Steering Committee meetings, I mean, this isn't Don's fault that, you know, teachers are using apps that aren't approved, that this has just kind of been, you know, business as usual, that, you know, under the previous administration, it's just, there's been no direction or no policy developed on, you know, what teachers can or can't use, are there approved applications or not approved applications? And from my understanding, I know Don has talked about this, trying to establish policies and, and procedures, and the way I thought we left it tonight was that David was gonna bring it up to Don at the next Technology Steering Committee meeting, but i- is that far enough? Can we just have a blanket statement that until further notice, you know, I mean, can we send out an email or something to teachers that they're prohibitive from using certain applications?
Well, since this is the first we've heard of it, I think I said earlier, I would like for myself and Mr. Chafano to follow up with Mr. Barsetti, get more details specifically, and then figure out what our next steps. I know our next tech steering committee is Thursday, so hopefully we can connect prior to them, but I don't know if the committee needs to be involved in this. I think this is something internal that we need to work on procedure-wise.
Let me answer that, look.
Sure.
And I'd also suggest that we, uh, we have some time to look into it, because I know that Mr. Barsetti gave us some good examples of a couple, um, but I, you know, if we always send kind of email out, I'd like to make sure that they're realistic, have this business as a list of, uh, what we might be using and we shouldn't be using, as opposed to just listing a couple, because we, we need to go back, my assumption is, look at all of the privacy and, uh, security policies of the apps that we are using.
And also get guidance from, um, our attorneys, and also what are other school districts? I'm sure we're not the only ones that are using these apps and the software. If any other school districts or any other, you know, public bodies, or, you know, maybe Don can reach out to his network of people.
Can we put some kind of a timeframe on this that's, uh, short-term? And, um...
We can report back to you by the next board meeting.
Okay.
Can, can you keep us updated via email? Is that all right?
Yeah, via our weekly reports, you know, as our weekly reports come.
And I would thank you, Mr. Barsetti, for bringing it to our attention.
And, you know, the other thing I'd like to note, too, since apparently all of our information has already been disseminated potentially to these, to these agencies, what can we do to rectify that, you know, other than, you know, you could say stop using them, but do they already have access? Can we take any action whatsoever to prevent them from disseminating our information any further, our information being our children's information any further? That I don't know, but that's something I, we should look into as well. David, thank you for bringing that to our attention. I appreciate it. I'm wondering, yes, some of those apps I have signed on to and have gotten huge boarding signs, I know, and, yeah, from them, and so now it makes sense. I understand why. Thank you.
All right. Um, just to announce our, um, future meeting dates are, um, 2 and March. March 3, the education committee meeting at 7:00 PM, and again, we will be here on St. Patrick's Day for our regular business meeting. Other than that, um, um, I would like, um, a motion to enter into closed session for the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity, collective negotiating matters between the school board and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, uh, and the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the school board, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. Uh, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Hold on, before we vote, are we going into closed session again?
Yes.
Okay, aye.
Okay. Uh, Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Yep, aye, 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 too. All right, and then, uh, just so that everybody knows, uh, there are, will be no actions after closed session.